All right, we'll run a little bit behind today, but I appreciate everyone's patience. It is 6:28 on October the 12th. We're gonna call this Flint City Council meeting to order, and can we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Ms. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
I'm here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
Present.
Thank you.
Councilman Winfrey did advise me last week that he'd be out of town on business, and that's why he is not here today. I think he's in Texas. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a short prayer? We're gonna be led by Councilwoman Galloway.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Heavenly Father, God, we thank you for this day. Father, I thank you for my foundation, I thank you for Governor Snyder, God, and I thank you for our ability to come up with the additional $2 million. But Lord, I call upon you today as Jehovah Rapha. God, I decree and declare that the children that didn't have the ability to stop this water from entering into their bodies, God, because you are a God that is always just. I decree and declare that they will have no long-term effects from this negative impact of this water. I decree and declare because you are the Creator and the Sustainer of all life. And I heard Abraham when he said, "Shall you, God, who is just and judges the whole earth, do that which is not right?" God, I lift up all those that have compromised immune systems. God, I ask in the name of Jesus that there would be no long-term adverse effects on their immune systems. God, I trust you. I decree and declare that the blood of Jesus still does wash away everything that the enemy brings into our body that was not designed for our good. And God, I thank you that we are a council and an administration and a city that is operating in order and decency. We bless you and we love you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Mr. President, a moment of silence, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Poplar.
Thank you. I would like a moment of silence. This is our Breast Cancer Awareness Survivor Month, so I would like to have a moment of silence for those that lost the battle and for those that survived the battle. And it was the choice of God Himself, who shall go and who shall stay. So just a moment of silence for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. President, can I include the store owner, George, in this moment of silence without taking away from either?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I know we have, as usual at all of our council meetings, we have people who have differing opinions. There may be some of us up here, or some of us may have different opinions than you, which is okay. That's what makes our country great, right? We're able to voice those differing opinions. But I hope we're able to do that in a civil manner tonight. So I would just read this statement prior to the meeting, so that we can be sure to hear everyone's voice tonight. That any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-12, disorderly conduct and disorderly persons, and may be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. And any person that prevents the orderly conduct of this meeting will be given one warning, and if you continue to persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. So my hope is, tonight, that that doesn't come into play, but that's our one and final warning. I can assure you that everybody that wants to be heard, whether I agree with you, or somebody else up here agrees with you, or whether we all agree with you, you will have that opportunity to be heard here tonight. First item on our agenda is 150873.
Mr. President.
Is there a motion, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, that would be the minutes. So I would move that the minutes be accepted and approved with any correction.
There's been a motion, is there support? Been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call on the minutes, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, I'm sorry, eight yes, zero no, for approval of the September 28, 2015 minutes.
The motion carries. We have no public hearing tonight. We do have our first opportunity for public comment, and as a reminder, that this is for items that are specific to items on the agenda tonight. There is another more general public comment period after the regular business has been taken care of on the agenda. So I would ask that if you are, if you did sign up, and this will be the yellow card portion of the meeting, if you did sign up, please have your comments stay on topic with agenda items during this portion. You will have three minutes during this portion. What's our first public speaker?
Our first public speaker is Mr. Ralph Diari. Mr. Ralph Diari.
No, I don't see anybody.
No, he's not here?
Nope.
The next speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell's here. Good evening.
Yeah, hello. Hey, Mr. President, I wanted to be all right, have a moment of silence for Vera Rising, if it won't be no harm to Ms. Poplar and Mays coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak on that DWAD, when we sold the property to the county across the street, I mean, the water thing across the street for the McComb counties and the outskirts county can play Flint like they ain't got no voice. Looked at Governor up in Lansing talking that stuff that, and we was in the room, said we gonna, he gonna get DWE out of it no matter what. But as the people's other, as the person of Flint, I wanna address the Governor himself through this microphone and all them peoples out on the outskirts of Flint without getting in trouble with you, like he's another kinda Governor, like Governor Wallace, always talking about kids. But we, with that water in Flint poisoning kids, Governor Wallace standing the way up in Mississippi, in Alabama, stood in the way, and even worse than that, Governor down there, talking about no matter what, and y'all just, and Josh, you up trying, it's freedom of speech, and I wanna, but that's it, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mrs. Shirley Taylor. Mrs. Shirley Taylor.
Good afternoon, brothers and sisters.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
I am so glad to see this many people here. Usually, you can count the people that come to City Council on one hand, over and the City Council people. I'm glad to see the citizens waking up and coming out. And, you know, for Snyder to come here and tell us that this water is all right to drink, just think about our bodies. Look at my hair. I had shoulderless hair four years ago. Now I look like a dog with the mangs. But let me tell you this, I have not drinking any water from Flint. I drink bottled water, haven't drank anything other than bottled water in the last 15 years. When I was working, we had filters on the water fountains in the factory. There were rat droppings in the filters. What if there wasn't any filters? I'm sure Snyder has commercial filters at his house, just like at the hospitals. What about the senior citizens? Nobody in Flint should be getting a water bill. And it's like, you turn, you turn on the water, it smell like feces. It smell like you just flushed the toilet. What is it going to do to our bodies? I guarantee you, the next five or 10 years, people will be dropping like flies of internal organs being destroyed with cancer.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Our next public speaker?
Our next public speaker is Mr. Chris Del Maroni. Mr. Chris Del Maroni.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni, I live in Flint, Michigan. I wish to address council on one of the resolutions coming up in regards to the Detroit Water and Sewage Department and the amount of money that's gonna be spent on going back to Detroit. So now that we have some numbers from Detroit and this contract that's yet to be signed, my question becomes, what were we paying for Detroit prior to the river? And once we make the switch to Detroit, is it possible that the switch to Detroit will be cheaper than what we can buy water from KWA? And if that is the truth, then maybe we need to back out of KWA and just let the county do it. Because if you recall, when this was all started, the county said that they're gonna do it with or without Flint, and it's gonna work with or without Flint. So I would say let them work with it if our cost is cheaper from Detroit. And I think in the negotiations with Detroit, that is a strong, a very strong incentive for Detroit to maybe lower the rates even more, for Detroit to say, yeah, stay on board, we can do it cheaper than KWA. So... The other thing, you know, we've talked about lead and water for the schools and the children, and that's all very important and good, needs to be talked about, it's the right thing. My concern, though, is about the restaurants, who are just outside of Flint, who are using Flint River water. And if you go to a restaurant, the responses you get will be, no, we don't filter our water, we're serving Flint River water, would you like bottled water, or none at all? And that's a good thing. I mean, at that point, I would say that restaurer is being honest. But you go to some restaurants and they say, well, our water is filtered. And you say, well, is it, you know, filtering out lead? And they go, well, I don't know, it's, there's a filter back there. And I think it's important that the county across the street with this council, with this body's endorsement, would say to the county, you need to have a letter put on the door of all restaurants that they are serving Flint River water, they're supplied Flint River water, and it is or is not being filtered.
Thank you, Mr. Del Maroni.
The proper way, okay? I'm just, and just so the rest, the people in the restaurant know, because it doesn't make any sense to save the children at school and let them die at the restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, our next public speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by saying that all of you are some political cowards. Mayor Walling, I have two demands, I'm not asking for anything else. I have two demands, that Mayor Walling resign, and that, at the same time, at the same time, that we do not pay for this nasty water until this water is fixed. If we went to Myers, and Myers will not be able to sell a defective product, we are able to take that product back and get our money back, or get another thing for it. We cannot drink or cook with this water. Now, in that meeting that y'all just had, I think I got this right, that with Detroit, we will be paying only $8.93 per 1,000 cubic feet. Well, if I'm not mistaken, Flint charges about $7.92 per 100 cubic feet, so Flint is getting ready to make a grip off of this. That's 10 times more than, they charging 10 times more than what Detroit is charging us. Then, on the other side, the state is getting ready to give us $6 million, Mott is giving us $4 million, and then we're gonna give them $2 million, and then we gotta pay Detroit up front. So now, with the state giving us money, that's taxes that we didn't already pay. And then, on top of that, Flint is getting ready to charge us and get free money, because they don't have to pay the state back or Mott back. So why can't we lower or raise the 100 per cubic feet to 500 at least? At the time this happened, Flint supposed to have emergency response plan in effect. Emergency response plan does not ask for donations. They supposed to have an alternate route, or alternate water service. Genesee County was our emergency backup service. Snyder said on TV that Walling could've made this decision a long time ago to go back. All y'all needed was the RTA to say that y'all can get the money to pay for it. He said he would've okayed it. All it is, is nothing but political games up in here, playing with our kids' life. The kids, 15 years down the line, it might not show today, but it will show down the line. If you don't believe me, go to the website, Google Camp Lejeune, where the veterans was poisoned, TTHM, from 1959 to 1985, with PCE, TCE, 1, 2, -DCE, which is a solvent from dry cleaning. I'm still fighting for veterans to get health benefits right now, because of the simple fact the government does not wanna pay them. Now, think about our kids in the long run. Flint, we can't even get $2 million to turn the water on now, not alone trying to get them to pay for our health, for our kids down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson.
Hey, Mr. President, real quick, I know we not gonna respond to each speaker, but for the record, I listen to what everybody say, and I listen to the word "all." I'm not gonna nitpick, but I'm not a political coward.
Thank you. Our, our next public speaker?
People can say what they want.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Claire McClinton. Mrs. Claire McClinton.
Good evening.
Good evening. When Marie Antoinette was told, "The masses are hungry," she said, "Let 'em eat cake." When the citizens of Flint said, "We need affordable water, some of us is going without water, we can't afford our water, we paying for toxic water," the emergency manager, with the mayor's blessing, said, "The water is safe, let 'em drink lead." If I recall correctly, last October, a year ago, General Motors said, "This water, this Flint River water, is rusting our parts." They came to the emergency manager, and he said, "Okay, go back to Detroit water." Now, when we said, "This water is rusting our skin and hair and smelling and making us sick," we was, we was told, "We're working on it." You didn't tell General Motors you was working on it. They had water drives collecting fresh water for the people, right up there at Catholic Charities. The mayor was involved with that. We didn't have a water drive out there on Van Slade for General Motors. They said, "Well, why don't y'all get some filters?" Y'all didn't give General Motors a filter. And then, last but not least, you told us the water was safe. You didn't tell General Motors the water was safe. Now, I'm not interested in thanking the governor, like some of y'all have to be politically correct and do, I don't. Because he has been instrumental in us going through this, this mess.
That's right.
And for the council people who were on the council, when you voted to bring the emergency manager in here, how's that dictatorship thing working out for ya? We are bittersweet over this. We're getting the water that we need to have a chance at having some semblance of safe water. But it's bitter, because it didn't have to wait this long. If you had to listen to the cries of the masses, you could've made this happen sooner. So I'm bittersweet. I thank the community, the water warriors, many of y'all in this room. Stand up and give yourself a round of applause for not accepting toxic, high-cost water. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker?
Our last public speaker during this segment is Ms. Marcella D'Angelo.
Good job, Claire.
I live in Ward 8, and I tested positive for high levels of copper today, and I'd like to know, besides lead, what else have you guys exposed us to? When will we be told what exactly is in the water? Because it's not just lead, it's also copper and chemicals and parasites.
All right.
Okay, our last, our last speaker...
Mr. President.
We have another speaker, if we could, you know, if everybody would hang on just a second, we'll get to her.
I wanted to make a referral.
Let's do it right after our next public speaker.
Our last speaker is Mrs. Andrea Watson. Mrs. Watson?
Hi, I thought I filled out the wrong color slip. I'm new. At any rate, I'm a resident of the city of Flint, I'm living with MS. I also have a son who's 32, living with high functioning autism, but transplant from Massachusetts, and this never would've happened. The fact that somebody stood in front of the TV and wherever and said the water was safe, after I had my water tested by the city of Flint, and it said it was fine, I believed him. I cooked with the water, I ingested it, my son did, I fed it to my grandchildren, and then I had Virginia Tech do the tests, and I got a phone call. Now, my doctor has informed me I need to move to a newer home with newer pipes when you make the switch. I'm not able to afford that, so I really need to know what you guys have in a plan to help people relocate because of the damage that you caused here. And I need to know now, because I have health issues, and this is just wrong, and there's a lot of people in here probably be in the same position. And, let me take this further. I feel for the landlords and the homeowners. What protections are you gonna put into place before somebody else moves into that home, or a home, that's full of lead pipes, that there's lead also in between, and then there's like coming in on the streets? What are you gonna do about protections for the next folks that move into those places? What do you have in place? This is a public health crisis. The governor should've called a state of emergency, and I'm sorry, but this mayor is useless. Anybody who stands in front of me and lies and tells me to drink poison, and it's okay to feed my kid and my grandkids, has no business in office. So next, the Department of Justice will be in here, so I hope y'all have your checks in place.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Nancy Boyd.
Berger.
Sorry about that.
All right. First off, I wanna say, it's a shame, you got all these people from the city of Flint in here, but where's Mayor Walling? He ran right out the back door. This cry came to him a long time ago, he knew this was coming up, but of course, he had to run out the back door. I have OPEC's pipe in my, my home now, that I was forced to move out of a home that I lived in for quite some time, so, as well as my fiancee. We were in there, he was in there 28-plus years in a mobile home. Park got condemned, so we had to move out. We had to move out to this poisonous water. Now, we got OPEC's pipe put in our home. We had our, our pipes tested, we had our water tested. It comes back two and a half times the lethal dose of lead and other contaminants. That's not including my blood levels, that's not including his blood levels. I got a lot of other issues that are going on, health issues wise. Don't know if it's from the water yet or not, but my doctor will get down to it, or doctors will, I should say. I feel sad for each one of these citizens, we all do. I understand children need their safe, clean water. The elders, what about the elderly? What about the dang disabled people, like me? We all need clean water. But I guarantee, if Dan Walling doesn't have, if he doesn't, I'll be amazed, he can probably drink the water, because he's probably got a filter in his house. He can afford it, he can afford it. People like us on fixed incomes, the children that can't afford it, why, why is that? Why should we have to step up and pay for those filters so our children are safe, when he's the one that lied to us? And all the rest of them, except for Eric Mays. He's had our back. But each one, every one of you wanted to kick him out of the meetings, so that he couldn't bring the truth forward. Well, the truth is now forward, and I hope this goes, and each one of you are criminally charged.
Our, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Keith Pemberton. Mr. Pemberton?
Good evening.
Good evening. What a pleasure it is to speak to you guys again. I spoke to you guys last winter, and I ask all of you guys to be honest with us, to dig in and research what we are trying to tell you, to go and stand up for the people that you're supposed to represent. And guess what? None of that happened. And you can smile up there all you want, all you guys can, except for you. I have four grandkids that go to Freeman Elementary School, and if their test comes back positive, you're done. Because, because I warned you that we were not just a small group of people. I warned you that we were a lot of people, and we weren't giving up. Everybody on this city council, except for two I know of, are going out, along with Ms. Walling, the ex-mayor, and hopefully, Ms. Henderson, too. And, and what that, what that other lady just said about being prosecuted, you will be. It's not a question of it. You will be. Smile at that.
Our next public speaker?
Our next speaker is Tanya Williams. Ms. Tanya Williams.
Hi.
Good evening.
I just actually wanted to kind of get a little bit...
I just actually wanted to kind of get a little bit more insight on what they were saying. You know, people are having to move out of their homes because of the decisions that were made to give these people water from a source that's been a dumping ground for years. Okay? For years. And everybody knows it. Not one person doesn't know it. Now, would you guys give your children this? Because I sure in the heck wouldn't give it to my kids. But let me tell you, I moved out of this city about nine months ago. But I drive an hour a day to come in here and to help these people get clean water. But what are you guys doing for these people? What are you and you and you doing for these people? I don't see nothing. Nothing at all. People have to move out of their homes. People can't even afford to buy water. And guess what? I got MS. I'm on a fixed income. But I spend almost half of my income coming in here to fight for the people. These people put you in office. You need to back these people. Okay? This is my hometown along with all these other people's hometowns. You guys need to help clean this mess up.
Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ms. Bethany Hazard. Ms. Hazard? Bethany Hazard.
I'm Bethany Hazard of Flint, Michigan. And I've been begging for help at my house, calling the city, getting jerked around. I've had like yellow sand in my tub. I've been taking a bath in for all summer. And last half summer, it happened too. All of a sudden, it went away. I had the water guys that were turning on the thing outside to drain the water out in the street, fire hydrant, come into my house to show them and they said it was gunk. So I came down here and talked to somebody. She said, "That's not dirt. That is iron." Well, the iron is leaching lead. You know, I had my water tested by the city, never got my results. Had it by Virginia Tech. And my lead levels are high. This was unnecessary. People have been talking about this for a long time. And I'm really upset about it. I've had cancer twice. I have a bad immune system. This isn't healthy for kids or people like me, the elderly. Something needs to be done. That's all I wanted to say.
Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. Good evening. Y'all thought I was gone. Sorry. Where to start? I want my water turned back on. Period. I've been asking and I've been begging. I bought my house down the street because I lost my other house because you guys raised the rate so high that I couldn't keep paying the house payment and keep paying the water bill. And I have three girls that I have to have that water on for. So I moved down the street and I buy the house down the street and I paid off. You guys killed the water again because that house has a water lane from the previous owner. Now, I have two water lanes on my house, one for $700, one for $2,900, plus I owe $700. I want my water turned on. I've been asking for help. I've been asking for help. I've been asking for help. It's been one hell of a year for me. I've lost my wife and I'm tired. I've been fighting and fighting and fighting for this city. Then the neighbor has his line removed. And I find out that every one of our lines are lead lines. Every single house in this city has a lead line. This is a chunk of line that they cut out of the neighbor's yard. And they threw it up on the side. This is 100% lead. See, I can bend it. You can't bend steel lines. You can't bend. This is a lead line. So you guys need to come up with a plan to replace all these as well. I mean, easy. But I want my water turned on. I am tired of being told, "You got to come up with this amount." I didn't ask for these bills. Before my bill got way up there, I always paid my bill. I'm on a fixed income. I want my water turned on. Now, you have so many elderly out there that have had their houses paid off for years that moved out of the city and they lost their house. They lost the house that they lived in for 30. I ain't leaving. My water's been off since May. May. I have been toting water since May. I want my water turned on, one way or another.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our last public speaker?
Our last public speaker in this segment is Ms. Carrie Weber. Mrs. Weber?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I will say one thing. No, Eric, you're not a political coward. The rest of you, not extending that. This is the most disgusting thing I have ever seen. I asked my husband the other morning when I woke up, did I suddenly wake up in South Africa? My children are now timed. They're down to six minutes per shower because I can't afford to replace everything. Here's the neatest trick. God bless the city of Flint. You will find your freaking money anywhere you can. We have always used two to three cons every month. Our water, and I am in your district, sir, our water has been read every month for four and a half years. We have an electric meter. We were one of the first go-throughs. City of Flint gets sued. Guess what? Everything now is an estimated read. And I'm up to six cons for a family of four. For water we can't drink, the water we can't cook with, the water essentially I flush the damn toilet with. So I jumped to $120 and $140 a month with my savings from the lawsuit. It is one more way. The city of Flint has found another little loophole and another go-around. This is disgusting. You have citizens providing water for shut-ins. Would you like to tell me where you people are? Because I've been out there. I haven't seen the first one of you. You've got people disabled. You've got little kids. I live kitty-corner to Freeman in case you need to find me. Ugly greenhouse, right on Ogama. Can't miss it. Pea Green. I have watched these children day in and day out go to that school. And now I can stand there on my front porch and wonder how many have lead poison. And good news for those of us in that neighborhood, oh, it's not just Framing Schools. That neighborhood has lead lines. 45,000 note cards. Let me save you a tip. We got them. They've been there. This is not a news flash. I know it's 1902. Everything goes on a note card, not a computer. Let me show you where they are.
Thank you for your time.
President. Mr. President.
I got Councilman Mays and then Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, as we deal with this council meeting, I want to give a shout out to the members. I see a citywide choir, a citywide choir which I'm proud to sing with. Can you stand up for me? I wish y'all had a song that was fitting for the times. We might get a chance to sneak it in, Ms. Roberts. So keep that in mind. A song fitting for these times and we might be able to sneak it in. But I wanted to say this. The Bible teaches us to look out for the least of them. And as some of us get ready to celebrate somewhat of maybe fresh water or decent water or better water coming from Detroit, my mind tells me to articulate and communicate for the least of them. The least of them are those who experienced what I experienced with water off for over six and seven months. I've experienced that as a councilperson because we was only getting $200 and some every two weeks. So I'm here to tell you, as we celebrate victories that has been won by people protesting diligently, I call them the protesters, the LeAnn Walters, the Melissa Mays, the Florissa Flowers, the Claire McLintons, the Trues and her crew. People fought and stuck with it. And then Virginia Tech, Miguel paid a listening ear. And then the medical community spoke up and the Lord made some things change. So the least of them has been people with water off. As you know, it's already been lawsuits. And what's been said, when I do my arithmetic, the average home maybe from August 2015 back to September 2011 might be owed $3,000, $4,000 by my arithmetic. Credits and refunds. I appeal to you, Ms. Henderson, and I appeal to this administration. As most of the community celebrate an opportunity for maybe fresh water or decent water or better water, I still understand that the state, the federal and local should do what we should do for lead infrastructure. I understand all of that. That's some long-term things. But we wanted relief yesterday and things is turning. We need to take a serious look and ask people who are often been off to come forward. I know that Val Washington and you are talking because Archie Haymon did a thing. He issued an injunction and a restraining order after the Court of Appeals had ruled twice on unlawful water rates. We are in a political season. Councilman Mays says this, Mr. President, and then, you know, I won't be through because I know what to talk and when to say. But Councilman Mays says this. When people arrest me for talking politics in council meetings, and I will be in trial on Election Day when people are voting, intentionally, unintentionally, that's where they'll have me at. And then it'll come a day when my colleagues and others will be in front of a jury depending and being judged on how they treated me. Not knowing at this point what a jury or my peers will say, I do know this. That if we don't understand politically that we are politicians and we don't have to be scared to talk politically, if it not been for this political season, I don't know if the governor, the Mott Foundation would have stepped up. I got an inkling that they would be trying to treat river water with phosphate, still experimenting with us like guinea pigs. Somebody's boy was in trouble. Some people want to maintain the status quo. I know Flint. I know the people of Flint. And I'm hoping that we can all do what we need to do in this political season. We need to mobilize, talk, get out and vote. Because what we vote and what we do has a lot to do with the quality of service and representation that we get. Ms. Henderson, I want you to take a serious look at them shut-offs. I know a man called me from the Third Ward, Mr. Nelson, and he had six kids, water been off. We might very well owe these people money. The gentleman just spoke. I would make a referral to the Finance Committee meeting that this be put on the next Finance Committee agenda. I make a referral to the Public Safety Committee meeting or whatever committee meeting it is. Because when you hear people talk about people who might be, need to be held accountable, Ms. Henderson, I'm going to ask you this. And Mr. President, then I'm going to give up the floor. The charter that I took an oath of office to uphold, it said whenever there's an important matter, whether it's in the big council meeting or committee meeting, that this council, just as in Washington and Lansing, we have the right to subpoena people before us, get answers under oath. And if they lie and don't tell the truth, they could be found guilty of the penalties of perjury. For months, for months, I've asked my colleagues to bag me up on an investigative hearing. The last investigative hearing we had was when the council, before I was here, probed Don Williamson and Patsy Lou in the campaign. The one before that, they did something about Darrell Buchanan in an ombudsman position. We have the power to remove people, even ourselves, after a public hearing. The emergency manager, even though I don't agree with it legally, left you with the power to decide when and if we use our subpoena power and investigative power. I don't been more believe the emergency manager could change the charter and give you the powers no more than I believe the emergency manager and the mayor could unlawfully raise water rates. This council just ain't fought against it. We ain't been to court to fight for ourselves and we ain't stood out on the front lines and been to court to fight for these people. So last meeting, this council voted me down eight to one to call an emergency meeting and try to get this business on the table. We got a $2 million amendment coming up. I said it in the chambers and I'm going to say it in front of these people. I'm going to try to make it 2.5 or 3 million because we got 16 million sitting in reserve because of the charities and the people don't drive from Detroit to give bottled water to kids and seniors in schools. We got a duty and a responsibility to provide clean water to the citizens of the city of Flint as we try to straighten this thing out. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President. And I hope people stick around for the latter part of this meeting. We need your support. If you can stay, stay. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Thank you, President. First, I would like to say I thank everybody who attended this meeting for attending this meeting. But secondly, I think that it's unfair to call me a political coward because I'm not a political coward. I was the first one. Well, let me say that. I was the first.
Can we, um...
I was the first one.
Councilman, just a second.
I was the first.
Councilman, just a second. I don't think anybody from this side screamed out at you while you were talking. And I think that you should afford the same opportunity for councilpeople to speak, whether you agree with it or not. So can we please allow the councilmen to move forward?
I was the first one last summer who mobilized a lot of you guys that's in the audience right now. I did four protests talking about the quality of this water. I did one march. And he knows, that's why he's shaking his head saying yes. I did one march, but almost could have got me arrested. I did four protests, one march last summer. I was the first one that got out of my political seat and rallied and mobilized hundreds of people in front of the city hall. Let's not forget that. I did that. But also, that's right. Thank you, sister. Thank you for raising your hand. Thank you. And I did that. Thank you for raising your hand, too. And thank you for raising your hand, too. Also, I just drove 20 hours in my truck to Washington, DC, and spoke to the Department of Justice, United States Congress people, senators about the condition... of Justice, United States Congress people, senators about the conditions that we're suffering from right here. I drove to Washington, 20 hours. Let's not, let's not disacknowledge that. I drove 20 hours of my hard labor, quality time to fight for this city. And there's somebody in this room that rolled with me right now because they know I did. And they sit, and they sat outside and waited till I come out and when I was in these buildings for hours, speaking about infrastructure, fixing other infrastructures, getting laws from the federal government to not only repair our infrastructure but replace our infrastructure. I spoke about the emergency manager law. I gave an example of why this emergency manager law is not conducive to the residents in the city of Flint, and I used the water woes as an example. I did that as an elected official. Cowards don't do that. I did that. And I stayed there two days. I stayed there two days and lobbied for the city of Flint. And I think it's unfair and I think it's unjust to call me a political coward when I've been fighting for these conditions. I wrote letters to the United Nations. I wrote letters to the United States Attorney General's Office, and I took another letter when I drove up there just recently. I think it's unfair to call me a political coward. And I think it's unfair to say that I don't stand up and fight for the people because I've been fighting for the people from day one. From day one, I've been doing that. Irregardless of what anyone may think about Councilman Davis, Councilman Davis is documented. You can look at him live, you can look at Channel 12 News, uh, uh, past, you can look at my Facebook page and see me inland, see me in Washington, see me on the Capitol Building. You can see all of this. I did this. I went to Washington DC and fought for this city. And I have to say I because when they said all is cowards, I was implied in that. And I can only defend myself. I can only defend myself.
I'll be the first to stand here and apologize for you then.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. One thing, one thing, one thing.
Councilman, ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to please, and Mr. Woodson, the same thing, and whoever else.
See, see, see.
Councilman, just a second. Who has this burning desire to stand up and scream at us? Can you please just hold that inside and you can scream at us after the meeting?
Yeah, because I can take the screaming. I'm okay. I could take the screaming. I could take the screaming.
Go ahead, please finish, Councilman.
But the thing that I'm getting to is, one thing about us as people, and I'm gonna have to speak about my people, is that we become so envious and jealous and hard-hearted in our hearts about people trying to do something for us, and when they don't get the credit for it, it bothers them to the point where they begin to cast out aspersions and throw slights and say what you're not doing. They look for the negative more than they look for the positive. You may dislike me for anything you want to dislike me for, Mr. Woodson, but I did drive to Washington DC and I fought for my people. And I fought for my people. Huh? That's right. And I fought for my people. So we have to learn how to work with each other. We have to learn how to work with each other more or less than to go against each other. See, when we study the facts and we deal with the facts, we have to deal with people for what they stand on, not for how we feel in our hearts when we feel we should be in their place. Because God makes a decision on who are to be leaders in this world. We don't make that decision. We take the position to go out and get elected, but at the end of the day, God makes the decisions on where we be and how we stand and what narrative in life that we may have. So I understand the cries that we go through in this city. I feel that I can be affected by it as well. My wife is affected by it. My grandkids is affected by it. So when I went to Washington, yeah, I fought for them too. I did. I fought for my family too. And I spent 20 hours and I had my wife, I made my wife take a day off where she could have got fired because she had no days off. But I made my wife take the day off because I didn't think I can drive that long by myself. So I made my wife go. Sacrifice because that's who God blesses. That's who God favors, the sacrificial one. We can't afford to lose a paycheck in my house, but I made my wife go. It's bad that she didn't want to go, and I understood we need bills paid, but I didn't care about that. I said, you come with me because I gotta go. And I told people I was gonna go, and I took an oath, and I lived up to my oath and I Now, if I'm a, now, if I'm a coward, I can accept that. If I'm a layman, I can accept that. Whatever somebody throws at me, if I am that, I can accept that because at the end of the day, when Moses asked God, who should I say? He said, I am who I am, and I am who I am if I am that, but I'm not that. I'm not that. I'm somebody that's been fighting for this city from day one. I came in city council, I was on welfare, and didn't ask nobody for a dime. I saved my money and started my own company, and I hired men off the street that got felonies on their record, that was a contributor to some of the problems that we suffer, from crime to everything else, and I took them off the street and put a paycheck in their pocket every two weeks just so people can get out their car and go in their house without worrying about these men mugging them. Because when I ran for city council, I ran because I understood that there was a multitude of men and women in this city with felonies on their record, had no opportunity, no hope, no justice, no jobs. And so I said, I'm gonna run just to change the dynamics and the constitution of the way that public, private and corporate sectors think about men and women with felonies on their record, and I'm gonna run and get elected and I'm gonna fight for them on this side. And not only did I fight for them, but I lived up to my passion. I hired them, took them off the street, took them off the street and they make a good paycheck and they able to feed their kids. Now, that's leader. And if that's a coward, please forgive me for saying what I have to say. I yell my right on. I think I said enough.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next item on the agenda is the master resolution. Can we get a motion on the master resolution?
Mr. President, uh, my president was dealing with one in time.
Oh, okay. Did I skip that? No. Yeah, can we get a motion to put the communications on file? My apologies, I did skip the councilman.
I would so move that.
Been moved, is there support for that? Moved and supported, any discussion? Can we have roll call on that, please?
Ms. Papla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on communications.
All right, now we're onto the master resolution. Is there a motion for that or are we gonna take a one? Sure, it's been moved, is there support for the master?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, are there separations?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays, what's your separation?
Yeah, I would definitely separate, um, what is it, 150872. That's the resolution dealing with the 2 million, 12 million to go back to Detroit. I want to separate it. And I would also separate the add-on resolution that gives Ms. Henderson the authority to negotiate as that 150875.
It is, yes.
Okay, and, um, the other separation, I would probably also separate the resolution dealing with the Crem as it relates to the police officers and the contract.
That is 150865.
And that would leave one resolution?
It was.
That literally leave one, right?
Uh, no, that leaves one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, and then the one budget amendment resolution.
Would you like to just take all of them individually?
Um, I think I would, but I know I want that.
150866, so.
Yeah, I wanted that budget resolution because the RTAP ran into some problems before and I don't want to run down that road again.
Any other separations?
No, Mr. President, I just think we need to let the public know.
I will.
We have an add-on resolution and, um, sort of should explain with the add-on resolution.
Yep, I will do that. Is there any other separations?
That, um, one, that was the add-on through you to Mr. Kincaid, is you referring to the one President Freeman came up with as the add-on? And I would ask that that one be separated as well. I'm gonna support it, but I just want it to be highlighted since Mr. Freeman decided he wanted to do it. I would have too, I agree with that.
All right. Is there any other separations? Can we have roll call on the master resolution, please?
Now, for the benefit of the public, you want to go through or want to go through to show what we're voting on now?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna be voting on 150...
828.
828 dot one, 863, and 864. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Papla? The vote is seven yes, zero no on the master resolution.
And the motion carries. Our first separation was by Councilman Mays, 150865. That is the budget amendment that you were talking about with the Crem Foundation.
Yeah, the one with the Crem Foundation, police officers at the various schools, part-time officers, um, the chief will have authority over those officers, 140-some thousand. Also, it's some other general budget amendments that we're making, and so I can support that. But I just wanted it separated, I want to separate it more for the purposes of going to the transition board. And so I'm, have no other comments and questions.
Is there any, any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Trust and achieve on this, yes.
Ms. Papla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And since Mr. Davis returned.
I was in the restroom, I don't know what I'd be saying yes and no to, so I just abstained.
The vote is, um, seven yes, zero no on 150865.
Uh, motion passes, 150866. Councilman Mays, you asked for the separation, this deals with the Water and Sewer Fund.
1866.
Budget amendment.
That's the budget amendment dealing with the Water and Sewer Fund. That's the budget amendment that I heard Ms. Lundquist tell us that we was currently sitting at a $16 million, I'm gonna call it a surplus, sitting in the Water and Sewer Fund. That's the, um, one that told us that we take in about 4 million or so dollars a month when people pay their bills and that the expenses that we pay out is about, um, 4 million or so for the employees and stuff. And that's the one that I inquired about to make me know how much and what money we had. So this is for the public, a budget amendment, um, that allows us to move and change and amend money and be current as where we're at now on that Water and Sewer Fund. And that's in general what I done picked up from it. And it also, I think, dealt with a $800,000 payment that we was gonna pay. But since we borrowed some money from the state, we finna put it back where it need to go because we ain't gotta pay that no more out of that fund or put money back. So all of these little details that we normally discuss in the committee meeting, and that's what I urge people to come to the committee meeting because you hear all them discussions. And by the time we get out here, if you didn't hear this, what I'm saying, you would just know we voting on some numbers. So I'm gonna support the budget amendments as it relates to the Water and Sewer Fund, which is 150866. And, um, unless there's anything I'm missing, I'm about ready to vote because I've already detailed.
Is there any further discussion on 866? We have roll call, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Papla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Next one is 872. Councilman Mays, that was at your request.
Yep, 150872, the budget amendment, Water and Sewer Budget Switch Back to Detroit Water and Sewage Department, DWSD Water Supply. This is the one that includes, what is it, 6 million from the state of Michigan, 4 million from the CS Mop Foundation, and 2 million from the city of Flint. This is the one that I thought about amending. This is the one that Mr. Kincaid and council committee talked about amending. And I heard Congressman Kielde, and I know that you gonna chime in next, Mr. Kincaid, but, you know, I'm not a fan of the governor, emergency managers. And I sure wasn't a fan of Mr. Donnie Early. You know, Mr. Early gave me my own emergency manager law order. He tried to tell me when I could talk, how I could talk, and who I could talk to. I didn't agree with it. Some of my council colleagues tried to enforce that, and so I didn't agree with them neither. I've never been a person to go along just to get along, and so that's what I didn't I'm a Christian and I'm a forgiving person, but once you do something to me, the mayor stood with Early and asked for my resignation. Mr. Kincaid, you stood with him and asked for it too. I hadn't even been found guilty or nothing. I pray on my knees and the Lord blessed me with not guilties and overturned the verdict. Now, we don't know what the future holds because some of it is coming back at me again. But my point is, the mayor has already been found to have increased unlawfully water And the mayor, and the mayor has already, because I record the news every night, 5, 25, 12, 66, and when I get home, I look at all of them to see what they putting out there. And when I heard the mayor say that I was in disagreement with Early behind the scenes on the news, at first I had heard about going to the river water because he never said nothing in front of the scenes. He never protested. He never marched. He never called a press conference and said, I'm not in agreement with this. But the news that I recorded showed him saying that I argued with Early about switching to the river behind the scenes. My position as a public official is transparent. You gonna hear me behind the scenes, in the middle of the scenes, and in front of the On my position. So when I heard Congressman Kielde say that the city shouldn't pay a dime, I respectfully disagreed with Congressman Kielde. When you made the motion and kinda alluded to the city shouldn't pay a dime, I respectfully disagreed with you, Mr. Kincaid, because sometime when you got nine elected officials and a mayor protesting, speaking up and disagreeing, the political thing move faster. But when you got one person or two arguing, fussing about emergency managers and water and the rest of them sitting there telling you to shut up, it moves slower. I do agree that the governor, the federal government, and everybody should help with these older cities. We lost 55 million or more in revenue sharing, money we could have for infrastructure. I done learned all these figures. I done learned budgets. That's why I say we got 16 million sitting there now. We finna spend two, hopefully it'll be 14 sitting there. And then we gotta try to make decisions what we do moving forward. So all I'm gonna say is this, I'm fixing to vote on that 2 million. I just went and talked to Ms. Henderson. I'm not gonna amend it 500,000 or a million, Ms. Henderson, because even though I said that I wanted 500,000 or a million in order to have semi-trucks of water sitting here, I'm gonna separate that. After we finish voting on this resolution, I'm gonna call again for an emergency meeting to deal with those budget amendments and recommendations and y'all can vote me down eight to one again. But we was in an emergency. recommendations, and y'all can vote me down eight to one again. But we was in an emergency, and whenever we in an emergency, the county called the emergency. But this city council voted me down eight to one for an emergency meeting. But now it's really an emergency, and everybody moving. That's why I believe the city is, should pay two million, because the city elected officials, including the mayor, took too long to move when the residents of the city moved. So it's time to vote. I hope we don't get no more funny amendments. I don't wanna jeopardize it. I want it to go through. I hope the vote pass, and I'm telling you, it's gonna be a hallelujah day when decent water flow. And then I hope this council meet emergency-wise. And Ms. Henderson, back to it again. I wouldn't care if we had to subpoena the governor, the MDEQ, Howard Croft, the mayor, and everybody else. I want them to come before this public, raise their right hand, tell me what they knew, when they knew it, because the information that we got tells me people knew, they didn't move, they didn't perform tests right, tests was screwed, they tested from certain areas of town. And right now, the state is saying, "We wanna come in and test your schools." The state is saying that we wanna test the residents of Flint, and Councilman Mays is saying it's like letting the wolf guard the hen house. I trust, right now, I trust Virginia Tech and independent agencies. I trust Hurley and that medical community, and that's who I trust. So we, I'm proud that you spoke up and made a decision, Ms. Henderson. When I seen you start saying, "Go back to Detroit", I'd say, "That's a hallelujah day." Whatever made you say it, once you start saying it, I then said, "Now, let's get trust back with people," and we fixing to turn a corner. We not there yet, but I'm gonna see what my colleagues do to help speed it up. I'm gonna see what you do, and believe me, people, after we get there, wanna look and see who might should be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just say, you know, Councilman Mays, you made some good points on making sure that we have enough money to take care of this community. And this council voted more than a year ago unanimously, "Go back to Detroit."
That's true.
And we wanted to go back to Detroit more than a year ago, but the emergency manager wouldn't do it.
That's right.
And I tried to amend this resolution in committee.
I tried to amend this resolution in committee, because I don't think the taxpayers or the water users in the city of Flint should have to pay two million dollars toward going back to Detroit. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. The emergency manager, it started with Ed Kirks. That's who it started with, and it ended up with Darnell Early, changing from going from Detroit to the Flint River. But the big reason was, Oakland County, Macomb County, and all those customers south of us had no voice with DWSD. And the governor, who gets support from Oakland County, Macomb County, and all those small townships except for Wayne County to the south of us, they wanted a voice with DWSD. And DWSD said, "No way in hell." So what the governor said was this, "Let's take away Detroit's biggest customer, and they'll fold. And then they'll have to create an authority, just like we did with the Carrigandee." Well, if you look at this resolution and you read it, starting January one, DWSD goes out of business. And it's Great Lakes Water Authority who we're gonna be purchasing our water from. And so I don't think the city should be putting up two million dollars on the table to negotiate with Detroit when they know you got two million dollars. You see, when you have ten million dollars, you can negotiate a cheaper rate, because if the other party knows you got twelve million dollars, they're gonna do everything they can to get the twelve million dollars. And in the end, and in the end, Ms. Lundquist said this in committee, "In the end, they're proposing a five percent water rate increase next year." I'm telling you tonight, mark my words, come July one, when the budget goes into effect, it'll be twenty-five percent increase. Because the more money that comes out of the fund balance, the less users that we have on the system, the less payers into the system, the administrator's gonna raise the water rates. And I guarantee you, sitting here today, that I can predict to you that the water rates, starting July one, are gonna go up twenty-five percent. And for those of you who think that we don't care, there's only one person that sat up here that fought with the emergency manager, that took the initiative to sue him because he raised the water rates illegally. I hired Val Washington. We went to circuit court. We went to appeals court twice, and we won. And every water customer in the city of Flint is getting a thirty-five percent rate reduction on their commodity, on their commodity. I don't do the billing. I'm only telling you what the court order says. So, Mr. President, I'm gonna support this, because my amendment failed in committee, but I wanna go back to Detroit. But in July, when your water rates go up twenty-five percent, remember who told you that that's what was gonna happen. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
I think it's necessary that people, especially children and elders, get quality water and have a quality of life. I think that's what we all stand by. I know that's what I stand by. What councilperson Kincaid is saying is actually the truth, but I'm gonna say yes to this vote. But I wanna be on the record, too, that if the water rates go up twenty-five percent, that I told you that it would do that, along with Councilman Kincaid. But I'm gonna vote yes to this. I'm not gonna deny you quality of life, quality water, irregardless of me thinking what's gonna happen in the future. I'm gonna give you quality of life and quality of water now. But I do want it to be known, in the long haul, that this was told. So if the same people come back, then the same people can come back and say, "Well, you did tell us that." It's the same way when I was protesting, and I was telling people that this water wasn't quality water, and it wasn't good water. Some people thought I was crazy. Some people thought I was crazy. Some people say, "Why is that guy out there, and he's a councilperson, and he's protesting and talking about the water is nasty, and the water isn't good?" Lo and behold, it came out just like what I said. Am I right? Am I right? Okay. All right. Irregardless of what some of you people may feel of me, I was telling people this in the beginning. Just like Councilman Kincaid said he was the first one fighting against lowering the rates, he was. I was the first one, as an elected official, fighting against this tainted water and that emergency manager pushing us over to the Flint River. Remember, if you look at the newspaper, it was a lot of us councilpeople that was at that water department when the mayor pushed the button. I was the only one you didn't see holding a glass of water in my hand, 'cause I stood in the corner saying, "I'm not gonna drink it." I was the only one, as an elected official, that was there. You figure out who all was there, and there's some of them up here that was there. It's a lot of them up here that was there, holding the cup drinking. I didn't drink it. And I was in the background contesting it. And two days later, I protested it. But however, I just want people to know, at the end of my, at the conclusion of me making this statement, is that I care about my city. I come a long ways in my hard fight in life. I did twenty years in prison, and came home and felt that I can be a contributor to this city. I fought hard. It's nothing about my stance that I have to compromise, I have to sacrifice, because I've suffered long enough. And I can identify when people suffering, and their backs is against the wall, and they got no recourse. And my whole duty and responsibility from this day moving forward, because it's only one person that I fear, and it's only one person I think that I should ever have to bow down to, and that's God. But when it's time to fight for the people, a strong leader puts his life on the line for his people. A strong leader puts his life on the line for his people. Because every great leader that you ever hear about, that was a real, true leader for his people, the wages of his leadership was his life. And that's the vow that I took. And I said to my wife all the time, and my wife looks at me and she cry, and she say, "Why do you speak like that?" I said, "Because it's the truth." See, I don't have to get loud. I don't have to grandstand. I don't have to look for you to clap, 'cause you don't have to clap. Don't care. But it's the truth in my heart that I really stand up for the people. Irregardless of what people may feel about me, we got people that has biased point of views. You have people have discriminatory thoughts about my electancy. How can an ex-convict be in the position that he's in? Why did I go to prison, Art Wilson? Why did he go to prison and didn't get elected or didn't go for election? I did. God chose me. God chose me.
Be careful on them personal people. They ain't elected.
No, I'm being, no, I'm just saying what I'm saying, because, no, I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna wanna conclude. I'm gonna conclude it after this. I'm just saying what I'm saying because it's wrong when we come down here and we cast darts at each other. We are elected officials that are elected to help you. We don't have to every time come down and throw darts at us. Let's work as a team, because you have ideas, we are a voice. Let's put all of our ideas at the table, and let's shift through which ones is good, and let's work on it. Let's work together as a team, as a partner, because that's what we should be. We shouldn't have to come down here and throw darts at each other, because it gets us nowhere. And I'm gonna conclude it on this. That motion that Eric Mays put to the table, that Channel 12 News misrepresented city council, they made people believe in that he put a motion to the table, saying that he wanted to switch over to the Detroit River, and we denied that motion. That wasn't that motion. The motion was to go to a special meeting and talk about the switch, talk about the money in the funds. It wasn't a motion to the floor to switch over. It was a motion on the floor to talk about the sixteen million or the eighteen million dollars, use that to switch over to Detroit.
Thank you, Councilman. All right.
Where are we? 150872.
Mr. President, right before we vote, the fact of the matter is, the administration has not proposed a twenty-five percent increase in water rates for next year. They dropped the six percent increase for this year. See, the administration had proposed a six percent increase for the last fiscal year, which ended June the thirtieth, and they had proposed a six percent increase for this fiscal year on water rates and stuff. But I say, because it was an election year, they dropped that increase for this year. And its council members rubber-stamped that six percent increase. Now, the next year, they proposing a five percent increase. What Mr. Kincaid is saying, and what Mr. Davis just said, they bet you if they gonna do a twenty-five percent increase. Well, I might take 'em up on that bet, because if the ordinance don't change from what it was, it said we could only do a eight percent annual increase. That's why they lost in court doing a thirty-five percent. So while people, and then since we the legislative body and make ordinances, we might wanna get together and create an ordinance to cap it off at eight percent now.
Thank you.
So while people making bets and guarantees about what'll be next year, I'm gonna make a bet and say what we do has a lot to do with what this city do.
Thank you, Councilman.
And so that's where I'm at, and I'm ready to vote. I pray to God that this pass.
Yeah, just one thing. It says eight percent or what is necessary for that year, so it does not cap at eight percent.
Beg your pardon?
It does not cap it at eight percent. It says eight percent or what is necessary to make the set fund settlement. All right.
And, Mr. President, just to follow up to Councilman Mays's point, just, Mr. President, just real quick, the lawsuit was that they violated the ordinance by raising the rates twice in one year.
Right.
Wasn't about the cap, because the cap says they could do it.
Well, I agreed that the lawsuit was about raising them twice in one year, but when you read the A and B as to what's necessary, that's why Michael Townsend told the mayor, "You can't do it twice." And when you read the fine print, that's what courts is for, and I read pretty good, I would tell you that that eight percent is there for a reason. And I'm not letting the mayor off the hook. He raised them unlawfully. His people up here support the mayor, and I'm gonna keep him boxed in all the way down the road. You know I support Weaver. I don't support, I don't support the mayor. So I know who got found wrong. And I know about that lawsuit, Mr. Kincaid. It was in Judge Uels' court. And then y'all appealed it to the Court of Appeals. And then it was two more people who had a lawsuit with Val Washington, and that's the one that Hayman ruled on. I don't know if you paid for them people. I don't know if you had it. But my point is, whatever you done, and whatever helps the people, I'm for. But I'm gonna talk facts rather than what I done, and I'm gonna let my work speak for me. Thank you.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
This is on 150872.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Amen.
Next, uh... Next resolution on the agenda is 150875. Councilman Mays separated this one. This gives the city administrator authority to negotiate with DWSD on that.
Ms. Henderson, could you approach? Ms. Henderson, I'm gonna support this resolution. But I know when you came in the city of Flint, and I looked at it, Donnie Early interviewing, sitting up there, Pastor Harris sitting here, different people interviewing. And I asked Pastor Harris afterwards, I say, "Which one you think was the right one?" I had sat in there and listened to all y'all interview. He said you. I said, "Okay." Me, myself, I don't believe in an emergency manager making a hundred and forty thousand with superpowers. But I met you. I ain't tripping. I wouldn't mind making a hundred and forty thousand with superpowers. But this resolution is fixing to give you the authority to negotiate with Detroit. You told us in committee meeting, rates of eight dollars and some change per thousand cubic feet. When Suma Cormick stood where you was at, it was fourteen dollars and some change per thousand cubic feet. And when I say all of these thousand cubic feet and all these eight dollars and fourteen, remember I said early on, we had a town hall meeting at Antioch. I start saying it then, I done learned as much about water almost as Forrest Gump had to learn about shrimp. I had to learn about TTHMs, lead, infrastructure prices, cubic feet, so forth and so on. I might not know as much about Woodson, 'cause he be calling all over to the EPA, whatever. But as we vote on this, and I support this thing, I just ask you to rise, because I believe that you're sincerely fixing to put your best foot forward for this community to get us hooked back up to Detroit. I'm watching you. I sound like a preacher. I'm praying for you. But more so, I'm praying for the people in this community. And as we move forward, that's how you learn and you trust. So, I'm gonna support it, go out and negotiate a good job, but do this, keep in the back of your mind what I said about them people who had, who are cut off, the least of them. You and one or only you can make a decision to get them people some relief. Can you imagine if they been off for months and you decided to let them back on? We'll get that money, they'll pay us some more. Let's put people over money, just for a minute, a grace period, just for a grace period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can we have roll call on one five zero eight seven five?
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Popla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on one five zero eight seven five.
That brings us to add on number one, Councilman Mays asked that to be separated, it's a resolution to establish, establish the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Flint.
Mr. Kincaid asked that the city clerk kinda read or deal with that, Mr. Freeman, you introduced this resolution.
Yeah, we don't need to read it, I don't need to read the entire thing, it's just basically, today has historically been known as Columbus Day, and I think what we often forget is that before he got on his boat and came this way, that there was a lot of folks that were already here, and that we should probably acknowledge the contributions that they made to getting us to where we are today, as well as that guy from Spain, Italy.
So, when I heard and seen this resolution that the first Monday in the city of Flint will be recognizing Indigenous People's Day, I had seen the Million Man March, I watched on CNN and I seen the Indians, you know I'm a fan of Farrakhan, and I listened, and then the resolution came, Ms. Roberts, I said that Carrie Nelson introduced this, I said that Jackie Popla introduced this, and lo and behold, it was President Freeman. I say, "Well, here he go recognizing some folks." And so, I'm gonna support this, sir, and maybe we can do it each year, is this the first year that you know it to be?
Yeah, I believe there's nine cities across the country that have recognized this, and I can't take all the credit for it. A city employee, actually, Matt Potter, had something on Facebook about it, and I thought it was a good idea, I've heard a story, a couple of stories on NPR and then also on the POTUS channel on XM radio, um, so, it just makes sense to me.
Well, if you, if you trying to get on my good side, it makes sense to me, but I hope that you be kind to me as an indigenous person each and every day, and I thank you.
Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Kincaid.
Yes.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Popla.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway.
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren.
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Uh, motion passes. That brings us to our final portion for public speakers, this is a more general opportunity to, for folks to address the city council about any concerns they may have. Uh, as a reminder, you do have three minutes, we do have a lengthy list, so we'll try to stick to that three minutes.
Could I ask a question?
Uh, as soon as I'm done talking. Um, and I would just ask that you be respectful as to us, as we try to be, whether you agree with that or not, with you, Councilman Mays.
Mr. President, about how many speakers do we have?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, some spoke, some might speak again, but if not, as I keep watching that citywide choir, I'm still trying to hear, maybe before I leave, Carrie, they might do something, you know? So, we gonna see what happens as this last part unfolds. Deacon, you gonna sing with them if they do, I'm just saying, you might do something.
Uh, first public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Ms. Andrea Watson, Ms. Watson.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Carolyn Shannon, Mrs. Carolyn Shannon. Mrs. Shannon.
Good evening, Mr. President, Josh Freeman, the city clerk, amazing Inez Brown, and the honorable council people. We have an opportunity today to help the citizens of Flint, and I think they are more important than anyone. If you love this city, then you will protect it with your life. If you are a leader, lead. Do not follow anyone into a dark hole. The senior citizens need help, they can't go stand in water lines. The children need help, because they're not scientists or biologists. And you do not need a biologist or a scientist to tell you that the Flint River water is bad. It's a cemetery. If someone is not thrown off into the Flint River, they jump off into the Flint River and commit suicide, and that is what it has been in the past. I beg you, whatever move you make, make it for the citizens of Flint who have kept this city going for the last thirty, forty, fifty years without General Motors. And I'm saying, if you have good water, start making cars, Delphi East, they call it AC, it's a brown field. Start making cars so the people will have jobs here, clean up the water so people will wanna come here. They are leaving here in droves, and I'm begging you to do something. Do not use those sixteen million dollars that we paid you to cut our own throats. It is time, it is time for you to stand up for us, for the people out here. These people have been protesting against dirty water a long time. They didn't just get here, we've been out there with, uh, Mr. Davis, with Mr. Mays, with all the other people out in the audience, and I remember coming years ago, this young lady had thick, long hair.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Your time has expired.
I will, I will finish up.
Your time has expired.
May I have a minute?
Not a minute, but if you can sum up quickly, then we can do that, but your time has expired.
Not only do we need clean water, we need some integrity, some honesty, some decency, and some love for this city in order to run it. You don't need no big shots to come in and tell us what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Bethany Hazard, Ms. Hazard, Bethany Hazard.
Our next, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Nancy Berger, Nancy Berger.
Pardon?
She's in the back.
Oh, she's, she's waving her hand in the back.
Okay, she's coming forward.
Can you clear the aisle way so that we can get people down through there, please?
I just wanted to say one more thing in regards to where we were living before they condemned our park. We were much happier there, we were going out and getting our jugs of water, bringing them home, which was tested by the city, tested a hundred times better than the city water. I got tested by the health department, our water got tested by the health department, came back up zero, nothing. Got tested by Virginia Tech and it come up two and a half times. Why is that? And I don't understand why each and every one of them can sit up here and say that the water's safe to drink, same as the mayor gets on TV and he sits up there and he says, "Water's safe to drink," but during that few minutes of break time, what's saying she didn't dump that coffee mug out and drop in a glass of bottled water? There's no proof on that. And I bet you each and every one of you got probably a filter in your home, so you can lay your head at home at night and you go to sleep, but you don't worry about these elderly's out here, you don't worry about the disabled out here and the children. And I do understand there are people up here that do have children, that's probably why you've got filters. But it's a shame, we were much happier, but now we're being forced out of our homes to be put in another place, that all I can do is flush my toilets? Really? That's a shame. And then we had a damage claim put into you guys, and guess what? You all sat there and denied it, all but one man. All of you denied it. The names are on it, who denied it? It didn't go, if it didn't go through the city council and you didn't see it and you're shaking your head, "No," where, who, who seen it?
City attorney.
Okay, but it, it was, it was denied. It's a shame, because it would've helped, it would've helped for me and my fiance's health and each and every one of them out here that has health issues from this water. And I just found out that there's medication being approved for up to eleven years old, OxyContin being approved for eleven-year-olds that are suffering liver damage, kidney damage, bone and ailments and things like that. I just got it, the text message. That's a shame. It's a shame for an eleven-year-old to get OxyContin.
Thank you, our next speaker.
Mrs. Shirley Taylor, Mrs. Taylor.
You know, it's, it's a shame for a city, and I love this city, I love this city. When I moved here, it was a small place, we had good jobs, my husband was teaching school, I worked for General Motors, I love this city. You didn't have all of these killings. Now, Flint, Michigan is known for being the killing field of America. I have two sons that were assassinated. Fruitful, educated young men, well-respected Christian young men. And this water, we might as well be drinking out of the toilet. When I think about the Flint water, I think about the commercials where those little children in other countries getting water out of a ditch. That's what we are doing, and we're paying for it like champagne. But I'm glad it made the national news. I'm glad it made the national news. See, we do all of this backroom politics and push it under the rug, it made the national So, I'm quite sure that Department of Justice and the FBI will be doing some things about the city of Flint. And I hope Mr. Snyder and his cronies will, they should be put in jail. Snyder should be put in jail, he should be up there where Quarmick killed Patrick was. To an elected person, we are paying, and to lie to us. You lay your hand on the Bible and take an oath and know you lying in the beginning, you, you taking an oath to fill your pockets. If the wonder that Bible had, you might as well, anybody that know about outhouses, when you used to have the Sills Roebuck catalog in the outhouse, you might as well had got that Sills Roebuck catalog and let Snyder lay his hand on it.
Thank you, your time has expired. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is R.L. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell?
What? Oh, Mr. Mitchell, uh, miss, listen here, Josh, on Columbus Day, uh, we the people, thank you for declaring this Columbus Day, 'cause my great-great-grandmother was Indian, and Columbus found out the people's is already here, and to Ms. Galloway prayer, since we named this the city of God, since she started to pray, where she go, Ms. Popla? But I wanna give my, rest of my time to this Michigan United, Michigan State Choir to sing as Mays requested before they walk out the building.
They go.
See what I mean? Okay, since they go, and like, uh, Ms. Henderson, she is doing a good job, 'cause she gonna speak for us in Lansing with that Alabama government, so to speak, that's standing in front of killing kids before they're allowed to speak. And when Scotty speak, she only listen when Scott Kincaid speak, talking about, "You done messed up my political speech, Scott, by talking about killed these, so I wouldn't pay a damn." Only when Scotty speak. Who Scott supposed to be to you? Josh, I ask you, through the city attorney, but he, he missing you, but Scott Kincaid, who brave enough to beam him up like he be beaming everybody up over, oh, she back? Who the woman who started praying in the middle of Flint, they said that's against the law, talking about the blood of Jesus, and what a choir to back you up, Ms. Galloway?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our next speaker.
Mr. Chris Del Maroni, Mr. Del Maroni.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni and I live in Flint, Michigan. The British are coming, the British are coming, the British are coming. You know what that was about? It was a message. And the message to the city of Flint from our mayor should've been, "The lead is in the water, the lead is in the water, the lead is in the water." And before that, he should've said, "TTHM is in the water, TTHM is in the water, TTHM is in the water." But no, what he says is, "Well, we didn't violate federal, federal regulations, we weren't violating Michigan regulations." But it was happening. Remember, the medical community has said, "No level of lead is safe." But this administration knew what was going on, and they failed to tell the residents of Flint what was going on. It's a shame, it's a shame. And then to go to the Flint Journal and say, "Well, I'm drinking the water, my family's drinking the water, my children are drinking the water." It's a crying shame, it's a crying shame. You know, council, sometimes you ask questions, but you never get the answers, or if you get them, you don't tell the public. So, I remember when General Motors wanted the tax abatement for their, uh, the new operation that they're putting in over on Van Slade, someone asked, "How many employees work at that GM facility that live in Flint, Michigan?" We never got the answer. You deserve the answer. You should continue to press it. And find, I, I would bet, I'd be surprised if it's five percent, okay? And that's what we do in this community so often, we help other people. We got this new water line coming in, the KWA, and, and, you know, we finally get, it's supposed to be the blue economy, and more and new jobs are supposed to come to our community. And the first job we get is the, the company that's building the pipe. And what do we do? We give them a tax abatement. What, what is there in that for us? How many eighteen-year-olds from the north side are working at that pipe plant? I'm gonna guess what. I'm gonna guess like zero. And if 18 is too young, go with 25 or 30. It's a shame what's going on in this community, thank you.
And just for your information, we did get the information on the truck plan. I believe it was 18 to 20% of them are city residents.
18 to 20, okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is, um, Mr. Robert Johnson, Mr. Johnson.
I, I was just doing some addition walking up here.
Good evening.
I love calculators, they're great. Says my bill is $779. So if we took the, if we took the, the 35% off of it, then I would only have to pay $510. How come, how come they won't let me do that? And then they turn around and they add 175 on there as a, as a fee to reconnect. That's a fee for the poor to reconnect because the rich don't get cut off. So why is it that the poor is being paid, or charged? Yeah, I screwed up, I couldn't pay the bill. I'm sorry. You know, attorneys cost money. You know, food for my kids costs money. Other things cost money. But I'm reading this and, and I should only have to, I should have never had to pay $700 and I put. Now, back just before they shut me off, I paid $1,100. Go look in the bill. In which I showed some, some, some people here on council that I trust. I showed them what I've been paying. I paid $1,100 because when I, when I bought the house in April, I had to redo the plumbing in the house. So I didn't turn the water on until September in my name. I had to put new toilets in, everything was frozen. So I put new plumbing throughout the whole house. And in September, I went up to turn the, the water on in my name. Well, then they said, "Oh, Mr. Johnson, the water's already on in your name. The water's already on. It's illegally on." Oh, that's nice. It wasn't on in the house. So they had to come out and put a meter on. They charged me $225 because the meter was gone. They hit me with the meter cost because I bought the house and the meter was screwed up or gone. Then they charged me for the meter. So I paid that to get the water turned on. Then they turned around and they went back to the time I purchased the house in which was April of 2014. They went back and charged me all the months that there was no plumbing in the house. No toilets, no bathtubs, no nothing. It was all busted. They charged me full rate plus some. And then they said that I had to pay that. Then they said that the water was shut off in 2007. So they went back even further. And they said, "Okay, well, we're gonna put this in other people's name."
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, your time has expired. Thank you.
I can't finish.
If you can sum it up very quickly, we can, yes.
Thank you. But I don't think that I should have to pay, in which I did pay the $1,100 in which they told me to pay. And then you guys kept on raising, not you guys, many of you are new. So some of you have been here forever. And you people have voted yes for many raises and increases that I will keep my mouth shut about. But the fact is, we should have never had to pay them high rates in the first place. And we should have never, ever had all the people cut off the way you did and kicking elderly people out. And, I mean, I admit it, I'm on disability, yes, I have a problem. But you guys don't realize, we're the first ones that get hit. We're the first ones that sink under the, you know, and then nobody, now, Mr. Crawford, he's been trying to help me. I've asked Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis has been wonderful. You know, people don't, don't jive with him because he has been helping.
Thank you, Mr.
I don't dare call my councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our next public speaker.
Mr. Keith Pemberton, Mr. Pemberton.
Good evening.
I'm actually gonna be nice this time. You shook your head no when the lady said you have a filter, right?
Right, I do not have a filter.
And you claim that you really care about our ward. But you don't even live, spend most of your time in our ward. You have a house in Travis City that you go to. And you don't even live, you have an address here in Flint, but you live in Davison. None of this stuff, none of this stuff had to happen. No bad feelings, no people upset, no poisoned kids. None of this had to happen. When I came to you last winter, when we were all done talking, you guys all went around and said how much you support the fight for water and everything else. And every single meeting after that for the next three months, you voted against our fight for water. Everyone of you except Eric Mays and Wantaz Davis. And when I came tonight and spoke to you earlier, you got this look on your face like, "Well, where's all that coming from?" Do you guys forget your voting record or what you say on TV that quick? You're going out, 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 he's going out, and you're going out. And if you don't think so, you think this is just talk? Add all of our numbers up and see. We're not done, we just begun.
Thank you for your comments, our next public speaker.
Our next speaker is Ms. Carrie Weber, Ms. Weber. Carrie Weber, she's gone?
Nope.
Okay. The next speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson, Mr. Woodson.
Wantaz Davis, you are a coward, political coward. When Eric Mays asked you to vote, uh, to go back to Genesee County Emergency Backup, you said you don't have time for, to assault our intelligence. You voted no. When I told you that we, the mayor can order us to go to Emergency Backup, you said the mayor doesn't have any power. I can't, your words, I can't do anything. You are a political coward. You sit back and talk about everything that you do is always I, I, I. Well, then let me tell you something, right? 2009, 2009, I was here when Ken Harden told everybody on the council at that time that Flint cannot afford to go build KWA. Then when they went to Flint River, I told them in the 2001 MDNR River, Flint River Assessment that it said that Flint can never be treated. Me and Bob the Water Guy was fighting against this before they even went to Flint River Water. Then, at the same time, you just started marching, you was marching for water rights. You just started marching until Bob Bocot came in here and you started marching. Don't sit up here and try to take the accolades and everything else. I too went down to DC. It only takes eight hours to drive from DC to Flint because I drove by myself. Then you say you went to the Justice Department. You cannot go to the Justice Department. You have to get the Congressional Liaison to come and bring the person over to the Congress office. Because I too went to the DC. But I did come back with information. Did you come back? I do, I do have information with the Department of Justice. Her name is Attorney, Assistant Attorney Lynn Dodge. I will give you the number if you want it. They are already doing the investigation. They've been doing an investigation for, for the past two months. Now, get off all that. Let me tell the people now, in order for us, because I'm gonna turn my back like they turn their back on us. You see what I'm saying? The city council itself, Eric Mays is the only person that really did something and really was out there. All the rest of them was out there to shine, just like when you hear Davis is I, 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 I. He doesn't care nothing about you, all he care about is himself and what he can get. That's it, a name, that's it. But what we need, right, we have to petition. It's called ATSDR. What the state is doing, they sending in people to take lead, blood levels and all this. And they looking for immediate people that's sick right now. 15 down, 15 years down the road, if you show symptoms, Flint or the state will not take care of you. So what we have to do, we have to get ATSDR in here, which we petitioned them. And they say they have to send a team up here. And what they do, they register Flint as a toxic problem. And then down the road, 15 years down the road, it makes Flint have to pay for our medical expenses down the road. Thank you.
Our next public speaker.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Doris Jones, Mrs. Jones.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm really confused because right now I'm seeing, you all saying that you gonna okay the $2 million. But before you were saying you didn't have any powers. How come all of a sudden you get some powers? You get some authority? When you had the power before, you say, "Well, let's call Debbie, stab me now, and Mr. Kill D about that money I'm stealing." All of these people who you say had the powers to do something about the water that was contaminated, that was filthy, that was making us sick, that was breaking us out. Now all of a sudden, you got powers to say, "Okay, let's go back to Detroit." Wow. I am just so embarrassed at this town. I'm so disgusted at the people with their arrogance to sit up at a meeting to even get a paycheck. You mean to tell me you getting paid to do this? You're taking our dollars, our tax dollars, and you cashing a check to say, "Hmm, I don't care about your kids." And then they wanna say, "Wallin, well, put him back in office so he can straighten this back out." Why would I put somebody back in office to straighten something out that he messed up? That is ridiculous. It, I mean, this doesn't even make any sense at all for you to be in a dawg to not even care. And you say, "Well, my constituents are the ones that are voting for me or the ones that put me in office." And you let it happen. Wow.
Thank you. Our next public speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Quincy Murphy and I'm here on three issues tonight. First one, I'mma talk about the bad issue that I'm here, but I'mma end it with something positive at the end. But the first one is, I live in a third ward and we have a candidate, A.C. Dumas, that's running for office. And I did some research and I found out that it's some allegedly, possibly voter fraud that might be going on. And the reason why I brought this up is I did some research. I filed a complaint on September 17th. And a lady by the name of Mrs. Dumas that lives at 533 East Rankin Street, lives in Texas. And then 2014, 2015, she voted in an election in Texas. Not only did she vote in an election in Texas, she voted in an election in Flint, Michigan, and her absentee ballot went to 533 East Rankin Street, but she really lived in Texas. And I have the paperwork right here, I have the voter registration, um, information that she's been in Texas since 1986. And I also have another person that I don't want to get into detail that lives in Kentucky that voted absentee ballot at 533 East Rankin Street, but they registered in Kentucky. I'm really concerned about this election. They voted in August, but they really live in Texas and Kentucky. I, um, I'm concerned because A.C. Dumas is supporting Karen Weaver and he's also running for office. So he voted in the August primary and there are some possibly allegedly voter fraud. I'm not gonna say it's true because I don't know for sure, but based on my facts, this person been voting in Flint and in Kentucky and in Texas. And I don't think they aware of what's been taking place. So I hope that you guys will look into this because we got an election coming up in November and we need to make sure that this don't happen again. I don't know how deep it is, it may be even deeper than what I do have the facts on. So we need to look into that. I'm not in agreement, I think that if we're gonna run for office, we ought to be fair on all sides. Dan Wallin's side and on Karen Weaver's side. So if her people wanna go and vote absentee ballot, they need to make sure the people live in the city of Flint. If Dan Wallin people wanna vote absentee ballot in the city of Flint, they need to make sure they live in the city of Flint. If they don't, then we need to make sure we do something about it. Thank you.
The clerk wants to say, the clerk would like to say something real quick.
If I could speak to Mr. Murphy's issue. He did contact our office regarding that particular situation. And because it does involve two other states, i.e. the state of Texas and the state of Kentucky, it was appropriate that I forward the complaint to the state of Michigan for them to investigate what I would call an interstate issue. So that's where it is at this point in time in terms of the state of Michigan investigating his particular complaint. So, you know, I've carried out my responsibility as the clerk. It's up to the state of Michigan now to get back with him. I believe that I forwarded his complaint onto them about three weeks ago approximately. And so, Mr. Murphy, I'm sure that they will be getting back with you soon.
Point of information, Mr. President, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Is voter fraud a felony?
Yes. It could be, it depends on the state. Each state has its own election laws. But because this one would be kind of federal in nature because it does involve other states, it's, it's a pretty serious allegation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President. And when I hear about this complaint and the nature of the complaint, I would like to caution everybody who heard what Mr. Quincy Murphy said. From what I know, when you vote, whether you vote in Kentucky, Texas, Michigan, Russell Street, Rankin, Tebow, April, we don't know how somebody voted. So I don't wanna say guilty by association because Mr. Murphy, if they voted once or twice, it's their private vote, you don't know if they voted for Wallin or Weaver. And so I'm not gonna let nobody stand here and say what a private vote from somebody reflects on candidate Weaver. And it don't reflect on candidate Wallin. So that's the only part I'm talking about. Whatever people do, I know people that pick, touching absentee ballots. And that's a felony in Michigan. And if I wanna say them and say who and what, so it ain't tripping me out. But I'm not gonna let nobody come to that microphone and make allegations of felonies in the middle of an election that reflect on any candidate that ain't got nothing to do with it. In this case, I heard him allude to Weaver. And Weaver ain't got nothing to do with that, Mr. Murphy. Maybe Wallin do, but I can't say he do. So I just wanna clear that part up as any type of investigation go on about one or two ballots. It don't reflect on who I'm supporting from what I hear, thank you.
Our next public speaker.
Our next public speaker is Mrs. Claire McClinton, Mrs. McClinton.
Claire.
She, is Claire here?
Is she speaking?
Claire McClinton, Flint, Michigan. I just want to say that as we move forward, we have to be vigilant and careful because there's some businesses, corporations, banks, and political operatives who like to take advantage of a crisis. And we trying to work our way and fight our way out of a crisis. So, we must be vigilant. And like one speaker has said, those of you cannot stand up with us and address our needs, you gotta go. You gotta go. You're gonna be part of the movement, just like we had the movement for clean, affordable water. We gonna have a movement to get rid of ineffective and careless council people and other elected officials. That's gonna be part of our strategy. But again, I want to say, we have to be careful because there's some operatives and corporate interests and rich folks, and they already got their fingers in our cause. And they don't mind taking advantage of a crisis. So, we have to be careful. I would like to see this council step up and be more aggressive. Why is it so easy for them to tell us anything and we just rubber stamp it? That's not even who Flint is. That's not even our personality. So, those are my thoughts in closing. Again, we have seen situations like Katrina, and they took full advantage of those people after that hurricane. And some people still haven't made it back home. And they shut down almost every public school in New Orleans after the hurricane. So, again, you have corporate interests and money people and folks out there, they'll take advantage of the crisis. And right now, we're trying to fight our way out of this crisis. So, we all, and I'm not speaking to this council, but to our, my brothers and sisters and men, ladies and gentlemen, and boys and girls in the city of Flint. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public speaker?
Our final speaker is Ms. Wonder Glover. Ms. Glover?
That's the last speaker.
That is the last speaker, yes.
Pass the gill, but then...
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Well, I know you not, you don't have to answer these questions, but I'm a preschool teacher. I work at McMonaco Elementary on Jenny's Road, and it's a shame that when I was a kid, I used to be loving to do the fountain water, but we have our water farms covered up for the babies, and that's like a part of their nurturing nature. But outside of that, I was, I know you gotta fix the problem before you can outburst something or get definition in what you're gonna do. I get that. But in that, I never heard nobody speak on, and this not my first one. I just sit back there sometime, don't say nothing. I've been at the Flint Public Library before and just listened, never said anything. But I understand about, you gotta get it together first. But I never heard nowhere or even on TV about, if, I know about the cash problem. We may not get cash back. I get it. But no one never talked about crediting nobody anything. How about that? I don't understand. But then when you say this thing about it's gonna go up 35%, then you're gonna up 25%, and then it's gonna still be like 35%. Then we working on this 8%. We only get, y'all still winning by 2% because y'all only left 10% out there for us. That's the way I look at it when I do math. And then, I didn't understand when, when they was talking about GM. My dad been working in GM since 1973, and he still in the shop right now. He run from A.C. to another place, but he still working. And hit the paint, he work in the body shop. He done been all through there, but right now he in the body shop. And the paint, the water, you know, they use water too as they paint. It was like pill in they trucks, like in real life. Like, he come home telling me the stories. I'm not seeing this on TV or I'm not looking at it in my face. I'm just hearing him tell me stories about it. And then another thing is, it's not just for us, it's for everybody. Like, you should think about yourselves. We here for each other as humans. It's not just about us out here. And I'm sitting back here in the background, and as a couple of people, I'm not pointing at people, but as you address us, although y'all maybe be sick of hearing it, or you can't answer certain questions right now or whatever, it's like the aggressiveness and the attitude. It's not that you have to say nothing, it's the demeanor you give a person. Like, I can take anything. You can say anything to me, just don't touch me. I have not arrived yet. I still be praying about it. And another thing is, when they was giving out the water things for the children, I mean, giving out the, the, I'm trying to talk fast, giving out the filters for the people, they speculated, literally it said, people with children five and under. But if you think about it, I'm a registered nurse in Texas. I used to work at Harris County Hospital. I came back here in '09. I've been a teacher since 2010. I got associates. I have a bachelor's April the 23rd. I'm an associate teacher. I have my own classroom in April. Okay, please, just two more. And address the thing about the, you can get a filter five and under. Do you understand that the elderly people are more, are they just the substance to catch stuff as the younger people and middle age start at 60, not 63? And I don't think that's fair. Look at, I can see in between, it's not fair to none of us, but definitely the elderly, and they was just focused on five and under. I didn't think that was fair at all. And my classroom is three to five-year-olds. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And one more thing, I'm sorry. And then I was thinking like, I don't want to point, but I just wanted to ask you, do you need a hug? You so aggressive in your demeanor, like you in the blue shirt. You need a hug? I give you one.
I don't think it would help.
Okay, and I appreciate you. And that wasn't like no sexually harassment. I was trying to give you all this joy, and I got inside me maybe some of it a rub off on you because I'm zero without Jesus. I just got some choices out here. And I appreciate you for listening. And we should really know that we here for each other. It's not about your paycheck. It ain't even about y'all. Y'all making the choice. You gotta really think, like, you getting sick too. Like, why should I run a bath and my bath water brown? That's not fair. Why do I have to run it till it run clear? That's not fair. That's like my bill going up. And then again, I want you to really focus on what y'all said about the 35% and then it'd go up 25% in July, and then there's still like a 35% out there. What about the 10% you lacking if you add it up? And then we just agreed on 8%. Again, you still winning by two, so we still losing and missing out. But I appreciate y'all for listening, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Just for everyone's information, there is not an age limit now on filters. If somebody needs a filter, they're available to everybody. Counselman Kincaid?
Not have anything, Mr. President.
Counselwoman Van Buren?
Yes, I just want to mention a few things, and I'm sorry to see that Jo Keane has left. He's from the Neighborhood Hub, or normally, known in the past as the Salem Housing Center. He left us some information, and I don't know if he distribute any copies of it to you, but he was emphasizing in there, if anybody needed help in installing the filter in their home, or had any questions of how maybe they could be of some assistance, how to make things a little bit better in your home, they'd be willing to come out and help out, which I thought was great because I have heard from some people that they are having difficulty in hooking these up, depending on the type of faucet that you have. So, I just wanted to point that out to you, and I wish he was still here so he could give you some of his handouts. The other thing is, the, as we get closer to Halloween, I know some of you are very involved in what goes on in this community. And part of it during the Halloween Devil's Night activities is to make sure we are not having arson activities going on in our neighborhoods and also for the safety of our children as they go out trick-or-treating. There are special patrols that will be manned by volunteers that the Flint Police Department is putting together. If anyone is interested in volunteering, they are having like four training sessions set up, starting in the next week or so. It is open to anyone. They'll show you how to use their special radios, how to do their patrols. I would encourage you to do that. It has been very successful in the past years. Last year, I think it was only two structure fires that they've had. There were years when we had big problems. So, safety is very, very important. We do have abandoned houses in our neighborhood or maybe even next doors to you, and I'm sure you don't want to have that type of experience going on. And even if you go to the training meetings, maybe you feel, "Well, I can't participate right now," but at least you'll be informed of what you can do just from your own home. So, please take advantage of that. It's another way that we can be responsible for what goes on in our community, how we can be of assistance to our law enforcement and our firefighters. You know, we are not in position, I mean, everything that we do in this city, we do not have enough staffing. We don't have enough monies. And everything that we can do as a citizen to help support this, support our firefighters, support our police officers, they're going out all the time. And we have been doing good in the city of Flint. We have not had bad situations where something has happened to one of them. In fact, some of our citizens have been doing outstanding in the community. If you had, I think it was today, something happened on the east side. A person was trying to burglarize a house. The homeowner found him and was able to, I guess, chase him out, and the homeowner had, I think he may have had a gun too, but he apprehended the burglar and held him down in the driveway until the police got there. I mean, that was a brave move, and maybe a little bit more than what he needed to do. But citizens had enough, just like you've had enough about this water situation. And, you know, you keep, you know, protesting, you keep being out here, you keep getting in our faces about it, you know, and that's what needs to be done. But the same thing, but we gotta take care of reducing the violence in our city, reducing any type of criminal activity. So, this, we can claim back our city. So, I appreciate you being here. I know some of you are more involved. So, could please continue, and thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Galloway?
Thank you. For those of you who don't know where the filters can be picked up at, they're available at G Card as well as DHS. And also, if you have seniors that need them, they, you do have the ability to pick up some for your seniors. To respond to Doris's, her claim, we have written into city council authority, the ability to approve certain expenditures. So, the decision to go back to the Detroit water was not the city council decision. As you know, there was a live press conference that the governor held, and it was necessary for us to make that transition, that it was a $12 million expenditure, six of which came from the state of Michigan, four of which came from Moth College, I mean, Moth Foundation, and then two from city council. So, what we approved today was a check and balance approval. The administrator cannot spend more than $75,000 without city council approving or seeing what that expenditure is for. So, what you saw today was that check and balance, not that anything changed from when we told you that the switch to Detroit could not happen. So, hopefully, that explains to you what you saw us approve today. And also, even though we approved that today, on Wednesday, the RTAB, the Receiver Transition Advisory Board, has the ability to approve or overturn any decision that this council approves or doesn't approve. So, if we don't approve something, they have the ability to approve it. And if we don't, so vice versa. So, I hope that answers your question to not think that we would tell you. I don't think that, and I can't speak for everybody, but I'ma speak for myself. It's not beneficial for me to tell you that I don't have authority to do something that I do have authority to do. And I think that that's an unfortunate thing, that when you serve a community, they believe that, and I'm not saying all people in authority, but for myself, it doesn't make me feel good to say to a constituent that I have no authority to do certain things. And I want constituents to begin to ask themselves, why would a council person that really has some sort of authority, we have a voice like you, but I'm saying, why, what benefit will we have to say that we don't have authority when we actually do? It would be more beneficial if we can execute something. I just, I just want that to be just considered. And then, the last thing that I wanted to just mention briefly, if I could, the Flint River transition has been a very unfortunate one. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. But it didn't start there. It started with the push to take part in the Kira Gandhi Water Authority. People can say what they want to say. There was a young, I mean, there was an older man when I was considering running for city council, that the passion to try and educate people about the cost that it would cost the city of Flint residents to take part in that KWA. I mean, this man was up at night. It overwhelmed him saying, "There needs to be more research done on this project. This doesn't seem like a good fit for this city." And so, the point is, you're trying to make provisions for us to take part in KWA. So, the Flint River seems to be that one because Detroit is mad that you have the nerve to consider somebody else. And then the Flint River seems like it's a viable source so that you can save money to fix the infrastructure. Because even when we switched to Detroit, the infrastructure is old. People's pipes are old. So, there's a whole lot of things that play into it. And so, you have to understand, if you, if you don't start at the very beginning, you don't understand even how we got here. And so, I just want to say, I drink the water too. I bathe in the water too, y'all, every day. And it's unpleasant. My grandfather lives across the street from me. He's 91 years old. And I had to go to G Card and get him the water pitcher, and he still won't, won't use it because for him, he just keeps saying, "Monica, I know that there's some issue with the water, but I really believe that more is going on with this water than what they're telling us." So, I want you to know that we have families too. We care about it too. And so, don't discount us, even as human beings. This concerns and affects us too because we use it just like you guys do. So, we're in the fight with you, maybe not the way you think we should be in the fight, but we are still fighting nonetheless.
Thank you, Counselwoman. Counselman Davis?
Counselperson Galloway hit on some points. But what I want to say is, is at the end of the day, we all supposed to be able to fight as a team, irregardless of how we feel about one another. We should be partners in trying to bring some help and some resolution to the problems that is crippling us in this city. Not just from elected officials, but from people in the audience as well, because nobody has the absolute ideal to make it seem like their ideal is more powerful than your ideal. We should fight with people like yourself over there at the Coalition that fight for water. We should be able to take ideals and suggestions from you guys and not lie with, to lie on deaf ears. But we should also raise our hearts up and our spirit of saying, "We're now finally finna go back to the Flint River." Because I heard some discussions up here where people act like we still gonna remain to be on this water and that we still have to fight to get back on the water. We're going to the Flint River in a couple of weeks, I mean, to the Detroit River in a couple of weeks. Excuse my language, Lake Huron. I use the word Detroit River because when you say Lake Huron, you got some people that say, "Lake Huron? What's Lake Huron?" I thought it was Detroit. And so, well, the point I'm getting to is, if you say Detroit River, people understand that more than they understand you saying Lake Huron. Because some people, huh, am I right? True. Okay. True. Okay. True. Because it's all the same. It's all the same. Thank you. So, however, thank you for letting, thank you. And it's all the same. My point is, when you're speaking to people who don't have an understanding or can distinguish the two between Lake Huron and Detroit River, it's best to be simple and say Detroit River. Just say Detroit River. And then they say, "Okay, cool. It's not the Flint River, Detroit River." And so, my whole thing is, we have to stop coming and throwing darts at each other. We can be called names, and that's okay. But at the end of the day, if you feel that much bad about us, then get out and make sure that people like who you don't like don't get elected no more. Because at the end of the day, when we walk out of here, people are elected and they selected at the end of the day. And it's always best to try to work with them than to go... And it's always best to try to work with them than to go against them. That, I mean, that's the best method, at the end of the day. Let's work with the people that we have in, when it's time for reelection, unelected. And that's simple. You know, Mr. Woodson came to the podium and he said some things about me and I wasn't gonna respond to it. As a matter of fact, I'm not gonna respond to it, I'm not gonna dignify it with no response and I'ma leave it alone. I'm through, I yield my right to, um, Councilman, uh, Nelson.
Councilman Nelson?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thanks to all that came out this evening, um, I know people are frustrated, they have been frustrated, I've been frustrated, use the same water, pay for the same water that you pay for, pay property taxes just like you or some of you pay property taxes. Got a installment due the first of, uh, November, um, because I can't afford to pay them all at once, I do pay them in installments. Uh, enough said on that, uh, I do wanna piggyback on, um, what Ms. Vicki said, um, about the filters, if you need assistance, and I even need assistance at my house, 'cause my son and husband can't see me get it together, Carmen Lewis at area code eight-ten-six-two-zero-twelve-ninety-nine or Jane Richardson at area code eight-ten-three-four-eight-fifty-three-thirty-two. Um, the Neighborhood Engagement Hub will help you put your, uh, filter on. And once again, I thank each and every one of you. I thank the good, the bad, the ugly and all of it. Um, those that, um, particularly wanna recall me, don't want me reelected, that's good, that's fine too. Because obviously, out of three terms, I've done something right for someone. So I don't feel bad about anything that Jackie Poplar has done and I don't brag on anything that I've done. The last committee meeting, I was so frustrated with, uh, people being frustrated that I decided to go and do what I normally do every day. And I went and I delivered, not only to my ward, but I went from York Street all the way to Hammerburg and I delivered seniors' water filters that couldn't get out. I deliver water, I deliver vegetables, I do everything that I'm supposed to do for people, including taking care of the second ward. Now I'm gonna feel real rough and real bad when I see a lot of the second ward down here complaining. And until that day comes, don't think you gonna hurt my feelings about pointing me out, 'cause I don't care about you pointing me out, I know what I do. Okay? So thank you, sir. Hold your little sign up, keep your little shirt on, do what you need to do. Okay? 'Cause I know what I do, I know what I'm gonna do, I know what I continually do and you, and if I don't do it for you, then baby, you the one that's hurting, not me, okay? So God bless you and all that you do, but I don't worry about you, ain't nothing about you I'm gonna worry about, trust me. Trust me, sir, just trust me. I, I don't worry about you. But thank all of y'all for coming out, I do what I do, try to work with my colleagues and that's what I'ma continue doing until the seniors, the least of these in the second ward, when they have a problem, I'ma worry about it. And worry about it, you point me out, do whatever you wanna do, what, back door, on the door, behind the door, flush it down the toilet, 'cause it means nothing to me. Thank you.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, first of all, I see my Peewee coat, Daniel Hall, still hanging to the end, Barbara, uh, Biggs, y'all went to Washington, I seen that, Claire hanging. Hey, I appreciate all the kind words that people said to me and I do value the relationships on the front lines, learning from the activists, not just walking and protesting with them. I picked up so much expertise about water from Leann Walters and, um, Florissa and Melissa Mays and talking on the phone and the Facebook page, Barbara, and, you know, you meet a lot of people, it's real. And y'all sometime have to go the distance. This didn't just start with the price and quality issue, it started back with Public Act Four, the emergency manager thing. And so, when people tell me, and I hear my colleagues tell you, we need to work together, I was saying that when they were being quiet, when I was getting arrested and threw out a council meeting. When they say we need to work together, I was saying that when people were telling them to run against me and I was saying, don't split the vote, let me make it through the primary, but they wanted to run. So I know all the stories about we need to work together, politics is a divisive business. My daddy, Pastor May, say you finna go into, and he done passed now, he say, son, you finna go into a divisive business. I live off of my vote, it's nine council people, you living in a dream world if you believe the vote's gonna be nine to zero. It don't work like that. It's gonna be four to five, it's gonna be Democrats and Republicans, ain't no real world working together. You can put your best foot forward, I couldn't tell two of my council people don't get in the mayor's race, you ain't gonna really do good, let me get them votes. That was divisive. I couldn't tell my council people, when Josh and Scott wanna tell me to be quiet, to speak up and team up with me and say, let that man speak. It sounds good when people say, we need to work together. Practice what you preach. Now I'ma go on to say this, you know, I had one of them tell me they were gonna have some folks crack my head, they promised me. I said, what? And filed a police complaint. Be careful who you listen to, I didn't get into politics to watch my back, tell me you gonna crack my head so I can watch you. So I know what I'm talking about when I'm sitting up here, I don't play. I'm one of them that will die, hope I go to heaven, bleed, don't care. The last time I caught a conviction, somebody threatened me and I carried my three fifty-seven in between college and law school, let me say this to the public. We finna leave out of October and go into the month of November. The month of November just ain't election for mayor and third ward council person and others, it's gonna be an election for the leadership of this city council. Even though I chair the rules committee, I done watched this thing, ain't nowhere in my mind do I believe you gonna see me voted president of the council. Ain't gonna happen in my mind, it would surprise the hell out of me. These people not finna vote on nothing, but like I say, you got Democrats and Republicans, you got control and division within this council. You got people who I can name who gonna vote together, they been voting together the two years since I've been here and they got four votes looking for five and then they gonna determine who is the leadership of this council. This leadership of council, the president, particularly doing emergency manager law, they go downstairs, they talk and meet with administrators and managers and by the time it get up to us, they already know what's happening. So that's the politics of leadership and what happens here. And so, right or wrong, that's just the way it is. And so I've come from a position on this council that I'ma do and say what I think is right, I'ma continue to try to look in politic for the least of them, which I might be one, I'ma try to stay grounded, I'ma try to be honest and I ain't gonna take too much stuff. So keeping that in mind, you watch what's gonna happen as we go into November. And whoever end up being the council president, when I got here, it was Scott, this year, it was Josh, Josh, Scott, Vicki, Ms. Poplar, and if Nelson be here, that's a block of fire. If they don't go back with Josh, it might be Ms. Poplar or Carrie, I would be surprised if it's Davis, Galloway, whatever they do. If I say it's gonna be one person, they'll make it be another person. So just remember what I'm telling you, I have no fantasies of being accepted in this clique, but I do have a fantasy of being a voice for the people who elected me, I do have a fantasy of growing stronger and support all around the city. And so I'ma work for the people, if they accept me, fine, but I will not let them continue to mess over me and harass me when I speak. God bless you, I hope I said something that touch you and as we move forward, don't get caught up in all that, we need to work together, whatever, it sounds good, but the reality of it, practice what you preach, amen? Amen.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would move that we adjourn, even though I ain't gonna vote in favor of it.
Second.
Yeah, motion on the floor, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no to adjourn.